One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please silence phones, pagers, and other items like that. Item number one, do we have anybody with a citizen's concern that is not already on today's agenda? Hearing none, I will move approval of today's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Dewitt, second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item five through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item five, approval of the minutes of the August 24 meeting. Item six, approval of claims. Seven is county auditor. A, receive the appointment of Jason Weber as councilperson for the city of Danbury. B, receive the appointment of Mona Kirk-Gatter as councilperson for the city of Anthen. Item eight, human resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate a hiring process. And C, approval of the date and financial impact of the 2021 annual fall safety day. Are there any questions or issues on the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Board of Supervisors, Mr. Butler and I listened to a presentation from Mr. Hieronymus from Trust Incorporated for the board to consider a solar panel installation and so forth. Young man, would you come up here and introduce yourself and tell us what you're thinking? I still never got the answer back on the total load on the LEC.
Do you care if I hand these out?
You sure can. We'll just vote to receive them.
I'll move to receive.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. You knew I forgot. Passes five to zero. You know I forgot to pin, didn't you? Um, go ahead.
I'm here to help you out. Um, here's what I'm proposing for you, that we take some of your ARPA money and we use it for solar unlike your jail, on your conservation center and other buildings, because it's money you don't get very often. You wouldn't have to pull it out of your budget. And it'll provide, it's like the gift that'll keep on giving. You know, we can offset your power usage so that you can use that money for other things, which I'm sure you have a plethora of, of places you can put them. If you page through here, I have a picture in there of what we proposed to the nature center to offset their energy usage. That's all on the roof and that way we don't take away from that site. And by doing that, we can offset, let me get to my page here, it'll be on page four of this one. We can offset 57% of their energy use. And by doing that, we can give them a savings over the term of $572,000. That's over 30 years.
And I know, and I guess I'm asking questions as if you guys weren't there, but what is the typical lifespan warranty, those kind of things on one of these systems?
Lifespan is 40 years on the panels. Warranty depending on the panel is 20 to 25 years. It's a bipolar panel so we can absorb from the backside also the reflection from the snow, white rock, things like that. The inverter is going to be a 10 to a 15-year warranty. The inverters self-monitor themselves so that if you start to have a problem, we know about the problem before you know you have a problem.
That's just, that's just the plan for Dorothy Pico.
What was that?
That's just the plan for Dorothy Pico.
Yeah. Which I hadn't been there until I went and looked at it for this. That place is awesome. I love that place. And if you look at this pan, this group, those are ones we've done in the past. The front one was for the city marathon. And that, yeah, 298.2 kilowatts cost them $445,000. Next one for the Albert City School was a little over $400,000. And then for Pizza Ranch in Spirit Lake, that was $366,000. So we've offset a lot of different things, their energy uses. We've never had to replace a panel.
And they'll take up to a four-inch?
Four-inch piece of hail.
Hailstone? And there's no set size? You can make these as large or as small as someone desires or wants to spend?
We can cover a 40-acre piece or we can cover a garden shed, whatever you want.
Would there be a way to expand that so that 100% of the energy out there is solar?
Possibly.
Is there room to do that?
If you make the room, we can do it. Right now with all the trees and whatnot, we would have to go on the prairie part of it and the naturalists were strongly opposed to that, so we just avoided that for now. So yes, we can, but this is the proposal we have right now for.
Would we be looking at a price tag that's twice as much since that's going to reduce by 50%?
Probably not as bad because that'll be out-ground mount. A lot of it will depend on the boring and that we have to do to get underneath your parking lot.
And as far as the feasibility of a building, you're focused on the nature center as the best option?
For that area, yes.
Okay.
That's where we can get the most sun.
I think, I think they're looking at all buildings, not just that one. Like, you're looking at LEC or other buildings, right? Or is this just the only one that's brought forward?
I would like to do your jail. I'd like to do, honestly, I'd like to do every building in the city if you'd let me.
So, I got into the wind generating stuff a lot of years ago.
Yep.
And there was an issue with running that power back in to the system.
For the net metering.
Like so Mid-American, they weren't very excited about doing that. How do you deal with that?
Mid-America has been awesome to work with lately. We do net metering, so through the summer we create a piggy bank and use the piggy bank up through the winter.
So there's a way to take in?
Yes.
The power? Is there a saving ability to save the power here?
To save the power grid?
Are there batteries?
We can put batteries in. Right now we're feeding them back into the power grid and like I said, creating a piggy bank through the summer to use that piggy bank up through the winter.
So that's your battery?
If you want to add batteries, we can.
No, but I mean, if you're pushing it back to Mid-American, that's your battery.
Yeah.
It's called grid tied.
What was that?
That's grid tied.
Yes.
Yeah. If you were on a stainless steel system, you'd use batteries or capacitors that hold the...
We can use batteries with and be tied to the grid if you want.
But what's the point?
What's the point? That way you don't get your charges for when you're... A lot of machine shops will do that because they have a lot of draw at one time. We'll use them for that to offset them.
Under cash purchase, you have the payback period is 14 and a half years. Is that generally regardless of the size of the projects or project?
The reason that is such a long payback is you have no incentive since you're a government entity.
Okay. So that's for small, large?
Yep.
One building, two buildings?
It depends on each project, but that's pretty standard just because of you have more tax credits or nothing like that to help offset it.
Then comes the question, do we have to bid this out?
A dollar a pound, I think you do.
At that price?
I don't have it in front of me. What's the, what's the cost?
Well, it's...
I mean, it depends on the building, I imagine, but...
And Trust Incorporated is a Iowa company.
It is an Iowa company out of Storm Lake. Been in business for about 20 years. The guy who owns it, his dad got into the wind and solar back in '76. It's a lifestyle for these guys and they're really good at working with it.
And another thing that we talked about with Mr. Butler and I, we're talking to Mr. Hieronymus here, was it can go on just nearly any landscape. It doesn't have to be flat. They can mount these on hillsides in long narrow strips. It's just a matter of where it gets the most sun and like that. So aside from easements and such, that we can kind of put them where we would like. Rooftop, those investigators are talked about, but I don't know that we want to go into perhaps changing the drawings again. So, just a thought.
Ground mount is super simple and then you can use it for education too.
Do we have, at Conservation, is that shingles?
Yes, it is. It got reshingled two years ago.
So these could outlive the shingles?
Well, the thing is, it's going to protect the shingles. If you have a layer above the shingles, your shingles shouldn't wear out.
Can we hold up to hail?
Up to a four-inch piece. They're tough. We use them on carports. They're rated for up to a four-inch piece of hail.
120?
Yeah. That's a big piece.
That's a big piece.
If we get things, if we get hail like that, we got a lot bigger problems than our solar panels. Yeah. You probably won't remember it.
That'd be the day, I think.
So, again, this is an information item. We just wanted to expose the rest of the board and some of the public to what we're talking about, what we're thinking, what we might be thinking, so...
How did you get acquainted with this company?
How did we? You reached out to me via email, I believe.
Yep.
And then, honestly, I did put him off just a little bit. He met with Dennis and I one day last week, I think, and we decided to go ahead and kind of liked what we saw and, sir.
He actually came about because of the nature center. And he was doing a project there and then approached.
Okay.
And if y'all are like me, an hour from now you're going to have questions. I got my card with me. I'll leave them for you. Give me a call. And if I don't know the answer, I will find out for you.
Will you leave those with Dennis, maybe? Sounds good.
We good?
I believe so. Like I said, we probably have more questions for you in the very near future, but interesting.
Absolutely. Don't hesitate to call me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Aaron.
Item 10, community economic development. 10A received the final staff report and planning and zoning commission's recommendation from their August 23 meeting.
David Glazer, Community Economic Development Director. Creasy Farms Limited Partnership, owner of parcel 8944-1020-0002, has filed an application for a one-lot minor subdivision to split the homestead from the farm ground. The proposed subdivision is located in the Arlington township. It's zoned agricultural preservation and is not located within a floodplain. The proposed lot and uses are compliant with the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Our county engineer has reviewed and approved all the existing and proposed driveway for access and has verified closure of the final plat. All required legal notifications were made. All relevant and agency stakeholders and property owners were notified of the request as well as the zoning commission's August 23 public hearing. As of today, our office has received no significant feedback regarding the proposal and the subdivision does not require extraterritorial review as the property location is greater than two miles from any incorporated city. And on August 23, the Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on the application as well as received public testimony. And upon closing the hearing, they voted unanimously to recommend approval to the board of the final plat as proposed.
Any questions for Mr. Glazer? So we're going to need a motion to receive the final staff report?
Yes, I would say a motion to receive the zoning commission's recommendation and final staff report and then a separate motion for the board chairman to sign the final plat.
I will move to receive the final staff report.
Second.
Motion by Dewitt, second by Raddick. Further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose say nay.
And now, item B is for the Steve and Michelle Blile addition. Is that the one you were just talking about or was that F?
Steve and Michelle Blile addition is the one we're currently on.
Okay. Any opposed? Passes five to zero. B is approve the Steve and Michelle Blile addition final plat and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution.
I'll move that.
Motion by Raddick, second by Dewitt. Other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item C, receive the final staff report and planning and zoning commission's recommendation from their August 23 meeting.
Very similar proposal as the last one the board just approved. This one is for Nathan A. Sheever, owner of parcel 8843-0520-0002. Also filed an application for a one-lot minor subdivision to split the homestead from the farm ground. This is in the Kedron township. It's also zoned AP agricultural preservation and is not located in the floodplain. All proposed lots and uses are compliant with the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Our county engineers reviewed and approved the access and recommended an easement agreement be filed, which will and was submitted as part of the application that we received. And they also verified closure of the final plat. All required legal notifications were made. All relevant agency stakeholders and property owners were notified of the request as well as the zoning commission's August 23 public hearing. As of today, we have received one formal comment with little significance from Suland District Health regarding standard well and septic requirements. It's just kind of some standard language they always say to us when we have a well or a septic that might be on a property line or an adjacent property. So outside of that, the subdivision does not require extraterritorial review. And on August 23, the zoning commission held their public hearing and upon closing, they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the final plat as proposed.
I'll move to receive the final staff report.
Second.
Motion by Dewitt, second by Raddick. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Approve the plat and authorize the chairman to sign. Item D.
I'll move it.
Motion by Raddick, second by Dewitt, to approve the Sheever addition final plat.
Raddick.
Raddick, second by Dewitt. Further questions for Mr. Glazer? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item E, receive the final staff report from Planning and Zoning Commission from their August 23 meeting.
Brett and Jody Peterson, owners of parcel 8845-1410-0006, they filed an application for a two-lot minor subdivision for the purpose of building a new home on lot two. The proposed subdivision is located in the Mobile township. Both lots are zoned agricultural preservation and neither are located within a floodplain. All lots and uses are compliant with the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Our county engineer has cited and approved all proposed driveways for access as well as verifying closure of the final plat. As always, all required legal notifications were made. All relevant agency stakeholders and property owners were notified of the request as well as the zoning commission's August 23 public hearing. As of today, our office has received two formal comments. One from the Woodbury County Soil and Water Conservation District and another from Suland District Health. Those comments were regarding standard soil erosion practices and again, the same standard well and septic requirements. Subdivision does not require extraterritorial review and on August 23, the zoning commission held their public hearing, received public testimony, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the final plat as proposed.
I think about 75% of your zoning work wouldn't have happened if there weren't people with the last name Peterson in the county. I'll move to receive.
Motion by Raddick, second by Dewitt, to receive the final staff report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item F, approve the Cozy Creek addition final plat and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution.
I'll move it.
Motion by Raddick, second by Dewitt. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Item 11, secondary roads. Approve the contract for propane at $1.10 a gallon with New Cooperative Incorporated.
Bids were received for our annual budget item for propane and New Cooperative was the low bidder at $1.10 per gallon. And Mr. Nara would recommend that the board approve the contract and I have a couple copies here for waiting signature.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Monson, second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Board of Supervisors, Mr. Ong.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. CW Suter wrote a letter to the Woodbury County Authority and Board of Supervisors on the 26th. I know this was read to the authority last week and I will read it as it is also sent to the board supervisors. It's, this is from CW Suter. This is the largest local contractor on the law enforcement center project. "To the Woodbury County Authority and Board of Supervisors, lately there has been a lot of news regarding the workforce that is being utilized to construct the new Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center. This news speaks ill of the workforce that is currently contracted to build and complete this essential project. It has been put out to the public, the authority and the board of supervisors that this project is utilizing all out-of-state contractors, that there is disappointment with the workforce and/or the workforce is not qualified to carry out this effort. As a local contractor who is contracted to be a part of this project's team..." "...that there is disappointment with the workforce and/or the workforce..." Could we ask the caller to mute their phone, please, Mr. Chair?
"As a local contractor, mute your phone."
For the caller that's waiting to speak, would you mute your phone, please? You're getting, giving us some feedback on this end. Proceed.
"As a local contractor who is contracted to be a part of this project's team, we feel as though we need to defend ourselves to some degree as not all the information as it presented is entirely true. This project is not utilizing quote 'all' out-of-state or non-local contractors. CW Suter has been local to the community since 1926. We have built our business by developing a strong relationship with our community in which we serve. We are one of many contractors that are locally contracted to be part of this team to work on this project. We make up approximately 20% of the overall contract of work to be completed. We have approximately 155 employees at CW Suter. Our employees and their families depend on this local work to support and be active in our local community. To our knowledge, upwards of 60% of the workforce contracted to be part of this project is local. This said, we do understand that not all the workforce is local, although this is true of most projects that are bid in our community. Our community does not support all the qualified trades necessary to complete these projects, especially a project of this nature. We are pleased to hear that a number of local contractors currently signed up to be a part of this necessary project. Regarding our qualifications, we at CW Suter invest in ongoing training for all our employees. Not only do we have the experience from long-term members of our team, we also have a training program called Suter University approved by the United States Department of Labor. We developed this program along with the US Department of Labor to ensure that we are providing the necessary training to produce qualified personnel to serve our community and our customers. Not only does this program offer the training and ongoing training to our current team members, but it also offers an avenue for kids coming out of schools that want to learn our trade. This program can offer a career path for kids to be able to thrive in our community that do not want to go to a four-year college. We are sending this letter out to you, the Woodbury County Authority and the Board of Supervisors, to let you know that we are not all out-of-state contractors. There is a good majority of us that reside right here in Woodbury County in the Suland area. We are qualified contractors. We support and give back to our community. We take pride in who we are and our reputation. To hear some of the statements made about us and other contractors in our community as to who we are and our qualifications as it relates to this much-needed project is disheartening. Sincerely, not Matthew Ugh, employees and families of CW Suter and Sun Incorporated." Now, we have the largest contractor on this project going to the, taking the unnecessary step of putting themselves out there, writing a letter and saying their understanding is most of the work is local, upwards of 60%. They are not just someone upset or in support of the project. They are the largest local contractor on the project. On the other hand, we have people in this community and outside, interestingly, who state things like 90% of the work is not local, 95% of the work is not local, 100% of the work is not local, all of the work is not local, most of the work is not local. You put that up against this letter from this respected company. It's been here since 1926. And those statements are incorrect, objectively false, wrong, not true, inaccurate. However you want to say it, they're facts. And they don't care about your feelings and they don't care about my feelings. We should unite around the truth. And with that, I will move to receive this into the public record.
I'll second that. And I just want to say that, you know, on a personal basis, our company has used CW Suter for years at home furniture. I don't negotiate contracts. I have nothing to do with that. In fact, our home furniture decided to use an outside company for a year to save some money. And it was a disaster. And they quickly went back to CW Suter. And it's, they've always been the best at service and responding to calls. And I'm really glad to see that they got the HVAC portion and the plumbing portion here on this project. As a board of supervisors, we have no control who the general contractor picks as far as subcontractors. They can pick whoever they want and, you know, from what I understand, you know, both generals were looking at working with CW Suter. And I think that's just a big endorsement of the quality of their services that they would have been doing this project. So, thank you for the letter. I appreciate what you guys do in the community. And quite frankly, I think you guys have some awesome employees too.
Motion by Ong, second by Raddick. Do we have any other questions, comments, concerns? On the item to receive into public record, the letter, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Reports on committee meetings.
Sir.
I went to the Iowa State Association of Counties Annual Conference last, recently. And there was a track on American Rescue Plan Act funds. It was all counties are having questions. Not all the same questions, obviously, but everyone is having questions. The thought process there is they're hearing from the National Association of Counties that the final rule, which takes place, of course, after the interim final rule on the use of funds is planned to hopefully drop around September 15th. That's what they're looking at. There was also, I sat in on a session of the health response led by a panel of health experts, including our own director Kevin Green with Suland District Health Department. He was stating some ways in which the funds are used by health departments and from a health standpoint. Interestingly, one of the issues that he, one of the avenues he mentioned was HVAC. Interestingly, one of the issues that he...one of the avenues he mentioned was HVAC improvements to allow filtration, negative air pressure, separate air handling units. This is important because you want to segregate different zones of the building. In case you have an issue, you find someone who's sick, and also negative pressure so things don't spread from area to area. I thought it was interesting that that was being brought up as a legitimate use of ARPA funds from a health director standpoint, because that is exactly what the, really, the LEC Authority is planning for those funds, to use them for their intended purpose in, again, the most cramped county building, so.
That's it. Thank you.
I went to a tenth anniversary celebration at Welcome Home, which is managed by Community Action Agency, and the purpose of that program is to take single mothers and their children, or families and their children, and place them in an apartment that's supervised with somebody that helps them get out of what's bad. The one person that...one of the people that spoke up said, you know, "I've been in this circle too long, I gotta get out of it. I'm clean, I've been clean, I'm happy, and guess what? I'm gonna be a foster parent." Now, you gotta do something to get there, so that's very cool. It's a good program, and I hope it lasts another ten years. That's all I got.
Mr. Radig? All right, I don't have any either. Round two of citizen concerns. Do we have anybody wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Please identify yourself and try and limit it to three minutes, please.
My name is Tricia Edglinger. I live at thirty-two ninety North Martha Street, trailer one oh eight, Sioux City, Iowa. I wasn't here last week for the big show, but I heard that I was under attack, and I have to say thank you to Menape for defending me, and to kind of combat what was said as far as misinformation. So, we have the law enforcement, you know, project, which, great, whatever, fifteen point six million dollars of COVID funding to go towards that? I don't agree with that, and these are my reasons. I...okay, so we're talking about facts, right? Okay, so graduation rates. The Native American community has been, for the past six years, been underneath, I would say, seven...or well, around the seventy percent. Last year, we actually had a ninety-seven point six percent rate, which is good, but then that also turns into a conversation with Rex. Rex, who gave me an email, says approximately fifty-six percent of the Native American arrests were within that...within last year. So, I don't understand why we need to use fifteen point six million dollars of COVID funds. Is that federal funding? Okay, so if it's federal funding, then does that also mean that we have to adhere to federal policies and laws?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I just want to make that point. This is a quote from Rex. I do not know...or I do know that officers have been working hard to divert individuals in the Native American or homeless community away from the criminal justice solution whenever possible. Those willing to seek treatment or shelter are often diverted from arrest. Unfortunately, there is still a lack of services for many of those individuals who may be willing to seek treatment and sobriety through programs such as Hope House. Mr. Monson, we were on the same board together, and I'm so happy that you said that, the Welcome Home. I wasn't able to attend because I was at you and I last week, so programs like that, so things like that, affordable housing is indeed needed here, and the Sioux City Police Chief is also stating that. So why are we using five point six million dollars of COVID funding towards a prison project when we could be investing that in proactive solutions?
Because in twenty years, okay, that law enforcement center is gonna produce millions of dollars of revenue every single year, freeing up resources so that we don't have to take taxpayer monies and provide them to the Sheriff's Department. This project, so I've been hearing a lot about how local people are not gonna benefit from this, and they absolutely aren't. They're gonna benefit necessarily in the very short term. There's still, what do we have, five point six million dollars that we've not made a decision about how that's gonna be spent? You heard earlier, we're looking at a solar project. We are looking at the sale of the county farm. If that goes through, that will reduce the amount of ARPA funding that we're gonna designate towards the LEC Authority project, but long-term, this is going to have a significant impact on the freeing up of county resources. Everyone stands to benefit from that. The five of us may not be on this board in ten years.
Absolutely.
If there's a new board where...that perhaps is not quite as stingy with...if there's different perspectives on this board, which then...
Absolutely.
There are resources that are going to be available because of the work that we've done, that may be applied in the future towards the types of projects that you mentioned.
So what if we invested in the youth, and actually gave them opportunities such as scholarships, resources, and things like that? Maybe our GDP would actually rise a little bit more.
Well, to clarify, we can't use ARPA funds in that way either, and, you know, as a county, the county works with certain things specified under Iowa code, so really, like, you know, the educational programs are done through the school board.
Yes, I do.
And, you know, they do put considerable funds into, you know, career programs and other avenues, you know, other than just education or GPA, you know?
Right, absolutely. I totally agree. However, this is quoted as once in a lifetime? Is that correct? Would that be correct? Is this just kind of money being given to us for...to combat COVID-related...
Well, and this is directly cost-related to COVID, you know?
Okay.
The bid, you know, initial estimates were fifteen million less, actually more than fifteen million less, and we had planned on something like a seven percent growth, but the growth in expenses was far higher. So the cost increase on the jail project is directly related to COVID, and the improvements we're planning to make are also specified under ARPA funds as to what we can use them for. We plan to use six million towards mental health improvements in our jail. Our current jail building does not have the capabilities for mental health that really should be provided, and we'll do that with this new project.
Right, for sure.
And so that's one avenue. The other part is the improvements to the HVAC system, which currently, the HVAC system is probably the weakest link to that building over there, that is also, you know, just...if we keep trying to pour money into an old building, it's not gonna work. So we had a referendum, we had a vote that passed, and we're now tasked with doing that and moving forward with the building and construction of that project.
Right, absolutely.
Because of COVID...
But we also don't want to violate NAGPRA laws or environmental...
That's not our...we hire people to take care of them.
Yeah, absolutely. I already talked to a state archaeologist about that, and that's still being decided. So why are we doing construction right now when we don't even know?
For the excavation workers, is that already done?
Yeah, it's almost like done at this point.
So that's...
We are building, it's been built on before, so there is a...we're not building out...
Virgin ground. Yeah, come to the microphone.
So last week, somebody had mentioned that there was no survey done for...in regards to NAGPRA. Is that true?
She asked if he knew, and he said he didn't know, so it was a do you know question, which if he didn't know...
Is that...I'm asking right now, was that completed or not?
None of us know of.
Not that I know of, but neither has there been any studies on all these housing projects going out, expansion of Whispering Creek.
Well, that's something, too, to look forward in the future, too, as well. This isn't just this particular project, that should be addressed in all projects.
Well, the excavation project was done separately now from the...
I'm just saying, I...that's on you, if you want to violate federal laws that protect Native American communities and our culture, that's on you. That's fine. I know for a fact that that's not even being decided.
The excavation portion of the project was not using any federal funds, is what I'm saying.
The cares...the cares money is federal funding.
But that's not being used on any of the excavation.
Okay. My other point was, okay, so we're making this prison, right, and we're trying to profit basically off of that, but how are we gonna do that? Rex said there was a twenty-three point seven decline in custodial arrest, so who...where are we getting...is this for federal detainees, ICE detainees? How are we making that revenue?
Well, there's multiple avenues, and I guess if you want to answer, that's fine, but there's also other counties that are facing the same problem, and they can't get their referendums passed, they can't house their own inmates, and there's ninety-nine counties in Iowa, so there will be a need for...
Well, people are letting people out of jail to this report.
And it's costing collateral damage, I would say, by doing so.
Oh, okay, 'cause...
Some of the inmates will be federal inmates under the marshal's service. I believe I was misquoted when I said that they would be ICE detainees. I don't know at any point that I said that, but the marshal's service is looking for bed space, and believe me, we've...this has been...this is not a new news item just this evening. We discussed this many several times in the past, in the recent past. This will be bed space for federal inmates, and if there are federal inmates here, it's to be used as a holding facility from someplace else. As a detainee, they will be housed here until their court date in, say, Oklahoma City. I don't even know.
Right, for sure.
But another misconception is, well, whatever, they're gonna be released here. Absolutely not true. They will not be released onto the streets of Woodbury County. They will be housed here, the federal government will pay us to store them here, in essence.
So we're using...
For their court case may be...their court case may be someplace else. Whether we were going to use federal money for that or not is of no consequence, because that was the plan going into this.
Right, but now we're talking about the fifteen point six million COVID care money. That's federal money, so that's what I'm just...
Yes, we understand that. You're not teaching us anything new here with telling us that it's federal money.
Right, that's what I'm...that's what I'm trying to understand. I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand it, but you're putting this into a federal...you're putting money federally into this project, and it's a federal project. Why, like, that doesn't make any sense.
And yet, the criteria that you're naming does work for COVID eradication or separation, those kind of things, whereas that was...that came about afterwards, so I don't know in anywhere of the ARPA Fund Act that says we can use this...these funds for homelessness or other things that you mentioned. So I think that realistically, we're using the money for a far more legitimate purpose than what is being put out there.
So, putting this all into a federal prison project...
We're not building a prison, we're building a jail. We're not building a prison.
Jail, whatever.
No, no, it's not whatever. It's a jail. Woodbury County and every other county in Iowa is required to have a jail. We are not building a prison. A prison is completely separate from a law enforcement center slash jail.
Okay.
So you don't think there's a difference? I do, and there is. We are required to have that. We do not have a prison in Woodbury County.
I did want to touch on something, too. You know, the whole time that we were asking for the referendum, so a vote of the public to support the project, I was very upfront that I was willing to take both federal inmates, ICE inmates, whatever federal source of inmates that we would need to take, and use that revenue to offset our operations once the facility is built. The project is not just Woodbury County, it's a joint project with the city of Sioux City. It's not just a jail. It does other things, too. So it's gonna house the sheriff's staff, it's gonna have some attorney's offices that, you know, alleviate some of the offices here in this building. So it's more than what it's being discussed as. Like I said, it adds the mental health side of things that we don't currently have. I mean, really, you know, people look at a stay in the jail like it's taking away their rights, but in reality, people that earned the stay in the jail did something wrong to get there.
That's not entirely...no, I don't agree with that.
Well, I'm not gonna have that debate with you, but a lot of people that end up incarcerated can have a chance to better their life through that process.
Yes, they do.
And, you know, that's really my hope for anyone that gets the privilege of staying there, but...
And if I had the resources, I wouldn't have gone the way that I did, if I had resources.
Right, and, you know, choices are choices, and I know...
I made my choice when I was sixteen, and they didn't wait until I was eighteen, so how does that...that's not okay.
Well, I don't...I think we're getting way off the track here. We still need to build a jail.
My point, you can build your jail or whatever. I'm just saying, I don't agree with fifteen point six of the COVID's care money to go into that.
Okay.
I think that it should be utilized in different resources, different, you know, things that could be proactive solutions instead of reactive, and I will stick to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have citizen concerns?
Yes, someone on the phone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, Chairman?
Yes.
Borough's four-four-zero-nine forty-seven Streets, Sioux City. Just wanted to refer back quickly to item number five on the agenda that the board approved. Just prior to the board meeting, I went to the website, and that...those minutes were not yet posted from last week, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood that the board voted to accept Mr. Ung's remarks from last week into the record, and the minutes that you approved, did those include those remarks?
Yes, and we have to approve them before they're on the website. That's why it's on the agenda as approval. This is the normal process for every board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We have another caller?
Yes, my name is Dave Bishaw, Regional Organizer with United Today, Stronger Tomorrow, address one-seven-seven eight-three Palace Road. So what I'm hearing here is, you know, as soon as Woodbury County has twenty million dollars, nobody can have a say in how that's spent, nobody gets their cut of the pie, but I'm hearing a lot of promise for the future, pie in the sky. There's a very, 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 you know, tactic, or tactful political mumbo jumbo, but my address today is to Vice Chair Ung. I wish I could be there with you today as you continue your campaign of assault against your constituents and your coalition who are concerned with the risky position the board is putting Woodbury County taxpayers in, but I am glad this conversation continues and indicates to me that we have your full attention. You're doing a phenomenal job at trying to shift this prison project issue to a union versus non-union position exclusively, but we will not be shaken. We reaffirm that our concern is with COVID recovery funds being used to cushion the inflated costs of this prison project without adequate public input and a blatant disregard for U.S. Treasury spending guidelines, not to mention disregard for Woodbury County citizens who have struggled through this pandemic together. This is an attempt at changing the narrative, can be seen in your dissection of our coalition's quotes last week. I can't speak for them, but I will read my full quotes from our email exchanges for clarity, and I quote, "I want to impress just once more that there is no argument from the community that the new facility is needed, but there is a deep concern for ARPA funds being used on this project while those funds can and should be focused on deliverable gains for the recovery of the community. We've spoken with the union leaders in the area as well as the heads of the AFL-CIO. U.S. Treasury guidelines also indicate using local labor and prevailing wages. The debate of union versus non-union work for the prison is moot, as we are indeed a right-to-work state, and we understand that there is a need for the new prison. The concern is with ARPA funds being used for non-local, non-pervailing-wage jobs. We've also learned that at least one local union interior sub was skipped over for a higher bidding, non-union, non-local sub." And this quote from the Sioux City Journal's opinion article yesterday should raise some alarms, and I quote, "Like the opponent, we have questions about whether the federal government will ultimately deem the law enforcement center construction eligible for American Rescue Plan funds. It's possible the authority could someday face the nightmare scenario of having to repay the money." Lastly, let me be very clear. Unlike your misappropriation of Woodbury County COVID recovery funds, United Today, Stronger Tomorrow, has no intention of leaving Western Iowa anytime soon. The people of Woodbury County and our region will continue to shape our base building work around recovery from this...
Earlier I seen you, the gentleman that gave an oath to pledge allegiance. And so I'm here to remind you that because you received federal funding, that now triggers some things. And so we reached out to different tipple officers with the, with the tribes and those tipple officers are very interested in, in how this project evolves and we would like to see a formal survey, wherever that gentleman went, the, whoever the prior owner was, if there was a survey done before or during or even after their use of that land. But now we get into, our understanding is that federal funds can't be used towards building new projects. That's basic, that's, tribes have their hands tied in how they're able to build, using federal grant funding and things like that. Are you aware of, of those constraints or is there, is there some?
We've, we've had, we've had our bonding attorney, we've had our county attorney, we've, 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 once again, we've, we've looked at every avenue that we can to make sure we're using this money legally and properly. It's, this is not.
Yeah.
This is not something new for this board and for the authority.
Okay. Well, so once those federal funds have been triggered, once, once you grab those, then the tribes then wonder where the surveys at, the environmental impact and the archaeological survey. Otherwise, you might have to find different ways to pay for that. And, and those are just the constraints that tribes deal with and so that's why we're, we wouldn't want to see you get fined because you didn't do the surveys, because where are you going to get the money for that? You know, so, so right now, the tipple officers are, are aware, from the Ponkhas, the Omahas, the Ioway, who occupied this land before the Yanktons and probably tomorrow morning I'll be talking with the Yankton tipple officers. And, and really, we just want to make sure that there's nothing under there, graves or, or settlements that might have been there. And those are our understandings and, and maybe, maybe, maybe we could help you somehow if, if you were unaware of some of those things. And so I would be in, I'd be concerned because you guys are having a groundbreaking coming up here pretty soon, right?
Yes.
Yep. So I, I'd, I'd have, I have some concerns when I look at that. And I know that the Omaha tipple officer, he lives right over there.
He lives right next to me.
He lives right next to her and she, they can see it. And those were the feelings that had come up, you know, and since it's on a bluff, then, you know, maybe if it was down in the river bottom, where the, where some of the train tracks are, there might not be as much concern because generally it's put their villages up on bluffs, up on hills. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't camp in a, in a flood plain. So, so there is concern when we look at those hills, when we look at that hillside, we wonder, you know, and, and you had expressed that there wasn't a survey done, but since federal funds, since federal funds are being utilized, that, that does trigger some things. So I'm just making the board aware that there are, there is some interest from tribal historical preservation officers.
Understood.
All right, thank you, sir.
Do we have anybody else? Board concerns?
Rocky, I did just want to address a comment that you made about the county attorney's office regarding the use of the funds. The memo that I wrote to the board explained the reservations that I had and cautioned the board.
True.
Regarding the use of the funds. So a characterization that it was, had the approval of the county attorney's office, I don't think would be.
I guess in.
Completely accurate.
That you're probably right and when I said it, I, I had that in mind, but I, I did not mean that it came with your explicit approvals.
I would also like.
Thank you.
To point out though, we have said all along, this is pending discussion and approval from Treasury. We don't know for sure if this is the, the way we can even use it. So we've said we will pursue this route. If we cannot, we won't. We'll figure out a different way to do it. I'm sorry, it's a, we talked to it afterwards.
Was he your attorney? Like, is it Dan? Dan?
The bonding attorney, no, he's on the, can't think of who they are.
Jason Comiskey.
Jason, I'll understand, Comiskey.
Board concerns?
Yeah, I, my response to Dave who called, you must not have read it, but it was, if you believe and you know that Woodbury County or the Law Enforcement Center authority has violated guidelines, run afoul of guidelines, done something in violation of guidelines, anything that's been said to this board, then I would like to see the letter from the U.S. Treasury or the Office of the Inspector General because it sounds to me like a lot of these people have this letter and we on the board don't have this letter. So I need to see this so we can react to it. That's a good segue to something I forgot about the ISAC conference I was at. One of the comments on the use of the ARPA funds was, as counties try to use them in a way that the legislation intended, that just make sure that you're using it for something that does have something to do with COVID and is not something that you just thought of, you know, after, after it passed and you thought, hey, we need to build this thing. This was already in the plans. And so the comment by all the experts, all the, all the county officials, and, and, you know, keep in mind, it's not just Woodbury County, all the counties are emailing the governor's office, their senators, their representatives, the treasury, the office of the inspector. We're all trying to figure it out. And all of these questions are not being answered in a way that we can just spread it to everyone and say, this is the answer. So the guidance is that if you do something that is outside the spirit of the law or the intent of the law, a few years down the road, the Office of the Inspector Generals, Office of the Inspector General is going to come knocking at your door and say, justify the use of these funds. What they're not going to be doing, because they don't have the manpower, they don't even know, there's no final rule right now, they can't do it, is go line by line and say, this line is okay, this line's not okay, this line's okay, this line's not okay. What they require us to do and what we've already done is submit a plan and our justification and they look at that and as long as it's in line with the intent of the law, then it's spent. And if they come back later, then we have to justify how it goes against the spirit or intent of the law. But since we can justify based on certain existing sections, that's what we're doing, that's what other counties are doing and that's the reality. So again, we can admit when we don't know something. It would be nice to have that be sort of, as a part of the discussion. If we don't know, just admit we don't know. Don't say we're violating when you don't know, you don't have a letter. Okay? Thank you.
We are adjourned.